Good evening, everyone. Today is August tenth, it's 6:00 PM, and this is the Acushnet Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded for future viewing on YouTube. I think we're via Zoom tonight and probably on cable as well. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting, please?
I make a motion to open the meeting, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Fine.
Aye.
Thank you. Real quick, did everybody get an opportunity to read the minutes on the June fifteenth? From the June fifteenth meeting? It's relatively a short meeting. I found a couple of states that I had to fix already today, so you've got the updated version. We good?
I'm good.
You get a motion?
I mean, I make a motion to accept the minutes from June fifteenth.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, I quickly jumped over our introductions. We'll move on. There's no public hearings. I'm gonna go slightly out of order, gentlemen, if you don't mind. We have a gentleman here from Serped that's gonna give us a little presentation, so we're gonna put that on first, so you can be out of here. You could just introduce yourself. And if you could too, just for the folks out on TV land, if you could let us know what Serped is and kinda give us a quick rundown on that, please, thank you.
Yes, so my name is Philip Hoop. I am the Assistant Director of Planning at Serped. Um, Serped stands for the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District. It's a very, very long name, but basically, we're the regional planning agency covering southeastern Massachusetts. So we help our local communities with technical assistance and the planning in kind of three main areas: comprehensive planning, transportation, and environment. And we also do regional plans. So that's why I'm here today, is to talk about this regional land use update that we're doing with all of our twenty-seven communities.
Awesome.
Yeah, so, um, I don't know if any of you are familiar with what these priority areas are, but basically today, I'm here to just kind of seek buy-in from each of our partner communities. We're a regional planning agency, but we don't wanna just swoop into a community and say, hey, you have to do this. Also, I'm here just to give a quick overview of what these priority areas are and how they help your community. So what is a priority area? Basically, it's just this kind of big regional plan to kind of designate areas across the region as either priority development areas or priority protection areas. And to clarify, this is just very, very high level. This does not come with any kind of zoning or policy mandate. It's more capturing what are your local priorities and then just kind of putting it on a regional stage. So priority development areas, these are areas for additional growth. They meet a regional need for housing or economic development, and they often have good access to transportation and infrastructure. Priority protection areas, on the other hand, are areas that are important to protect. These include significant natural or cultural resources such as habitats, water resources like aquifers or watersheds, historic resources, and farms and agriculture. So how do we determine where these priority areas go? Well, it's all up to our local communities to choose, and we, as a regional planning agency, are here to empower you with data and other kind of planning best practices to help you decide where these priority areas go. So we provide kind of a lot of data, so like zoning, land use, infrastructure, all kind of what I call human side of things. Then also environmental data like habitats, water resources, and conservation areas. So this isn't our first rodeo. This is kind of the second update. So two thousand eight, there's kind of this first pass of designating priority areas across the region. Really, this process came about because of South Coast Rail and the need to kind of do some smart planning around transit. In two thousand thirteen, these boundaries were updated, and there's kind of even more civic engagement to help determine where these priority areas go. So what are we really doing differently in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four? Not really much. Basically, ten years have passed. South Coast Rail is going to start probably in the next year or so. So we wanna make sure our region is prepared for the implications of what that is and make sure that the priority areas from two thousand thirteen still match up with the priorities of each of our communities. So we're going to update boundaries based on new data and also local knowledge and information that y'all provide. We're gonna roll out more modern civic engagement tools, so a lot of online tools, for example. And then we also hope to provide a bit more specifics in terms of design and policy kind of recommendations for key sites across the region. So why are we doing this? Why are we spending two years going out to all twenty-seven of our communities? PDA, these priority areas do help our communities. So a PDA designation helps communities coordinate local planning and also win competitive grants, especially from the state. So in North Attleboro, after they designated their local downtown as a priority development, sorry, yeah, priority development area, um, uh, sorry. In a previous role, PDA stands for a different acronym, and I kind of sometimes get them confused. But after that, they got funding for new zoning. They also got a one-point-three-million-dollar masterwork grant to make sure that this former industrial site was development-ready, and the end result is a hundred ninety-three units located in their downtown area. So having this PDA designation helped them win competitive state grants. Priority protection areas work really similarly. They help our communities coordinate local conservation efforts and also win competitive grants particularly to acquire land. So in Norden, after the PPA process, it kind of gave them a lot of information on how to update their open space and rec plan. They got a five-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-dollar land grant from the state for conservation acquisitions, and the end result is a hundred fifty acres that are permanently protected. So any questions I can answer about what these priority areas are before we kind of go through some of the ones in your community?
No, if you could, as far as I'm concerned, you've laid it out pretty clear.
Cool, great. So there are nine priority development areas covering about eight hundred acres and four priority protection areas covering forty-nine hundred acres. So these are the ones from two thousand thirteen. So you can see in the purple, these are the priority development areas, and then in green are the priority protection areas. So you can see it covers things like the built-out areas like Village Residential District, kind of more important business corridors, also opportunities for larger commercial or industrial development, and then even kind of smaller nodes across town. So then priority protection areas, these are often kind of large natural areas. Sometimes they cover just huge swaths of town. And really, our goal this time around is trying to make sure that our towns have really good information to say, okay, if we're planning on acquiring land to preserve it, how can we kind of showcase that? So any particular observations or questions about kind of the ones here after this meeting? Happy to provide the two thousand thirteen report, so you can go through each of these and kind of start familiarizing yourself with each of the priority areas. Just because I know I went through them really, really quickly.
Yeah, I would be interested in the, depending on the purple, if you can give a report of, you know, where they are and...
Yeah. So this report, kind of you can see each of them has a label, and then it just goes through each one, saying what the general purpose is, how the boundaries were chosen in two thousand thirteen, and it also talks about what changes were done from the previous one in two thousand eight. So we're doing something really, really similar. So let me just quickly talk about our process. So we are just wrapping up our kickoff phase, where we are just introducing this regional update to all of our communities. We've already begun our local workshops, so this is kind of the second meeting, where we generally meet with kind of really knowledgeable stakeholders in town and just go through systematically each one of the priority areas and just say, what's changed? Has there been new development, new zoning, changing priorities of what you want kind of this area to be? Is this still a priority development area or protection area? Two, just asking, should the boundaries change? Do we wanna expand it? Do we wanna just get rid of the priority area? And then, three, anything we can capture or help with kind of like implementation? So if you imagine that this party development area should be a vibrant mixed-use walkable district, what can we suggest to help get that to happen? So after we get feedback from kind of, on a very, very, after this technical meeting, we'll come back and present the draft priority areas and just kind of say, hey, did we get this right? Did we hear everything that you said? And then we'll make small tweaks. And then lastly, we'll have kind of two large regional screening meetings. Here, we'll see all the priority areas across all of our communities and kind of select the ones that are most important in the region, and those get kind of a additional kind of recognition as a regional priority area. So we've been going around talking to kind of different layers of local governments, whether it's sometimes a planner, sometimes it's a select board or mayor, and sometimes it's a planning board. And kind of your role is just to kind of be the ambassadors for your community, tell us, kind of you're the local knowledge, we can't do this without your help. So we're really, really excited to get started. Yeah, and kind of one important thing is just like who you think would be really great for this kind of more technical workshop going through each of the priority areas? If you think this format works best, we're always happy to come. It's up to each community. Some communities want this to be a community meeting, and we're also happy to do that.
I think, I think Town Administrator is already working on the workshop section of it, and I know, I know, I think he's trying to shoot for sometime in September. It's a conversation that we had, and he wants to get kind of like all department heads, you know, between conservation, planning, police, fire, everybody kind of involved in, in the next, in that workshop stage of it. So I do know that that's kind of, I guess, in the process. And I'd like, you know, all the board, you know, my board to be there if they can. But I think, I think it's a great idea. As a board, I think we're always kind of looking to where we can grow commercial, residential, or even, you know, protective property. I think this is great.
Cool. I guess one of my questions is, is there kind of, what are kind of the main things that Acushnet's like kind of, not necessarily struggling with, but kind of what are the main like planning challenges or opportunities that you see kind of that the town's working through?
One of the things that I think the town is kind of focusing on now is a little bit of that over-fifty housing. We have very little to know senior housing in the town. So I know that's something that one of our selectmen is kind of spearheading, and it's something that is important to this town, is to get a little bit more of a over-fifty, you know, housing. Anything that we can do, I know that others are looking into anything that can be done commercially in the... Yeah, anything that we can do commercially to help with the tax revenue in this town is always something that we're looking at. And yeah, I mean...
We get some updating and expansion of infrastructure is probably, probably one of the big things.
Yeah.
Water, sewer.
That's, yeah, once...
Sewer's a big one, so...
Yeah, once we can expand on the water and sewer, then everything else kind of falls in line with the housing and the development and the commercial. But yeah, that's definitely probably one of the biggest ones.
Yeah, definitely. I'm glad that I kind of quickly showed the North Attleboro example. We do have an even more little detailed, like, page about it. Just because it just required like lots of different elements to come together. It was the right zoning, it was water and sewer and road improvements. The end result is, well, in that case, it's housing, but another community, it might be commercial development.
Right, right. That's, that's, I think, some of the biggest hopes for this town.
Great. Any other questions, thoughts I can help with?
I guess just to go a little further or in a little different direction on that question. When I was looking at the areas that were purple for the PDA areas, I mean, the, the, really, other than some small pieces in the rest of the town, most of those purple areas are in a highly residential-developed area, which seems like that would be difficult to do something with. Then we've got the area, the PJ Keating, a big hole in the ground. That certainly is going to be a difficult area to look at, things other than a big pit. There is the old title, there are the old titleist properties next to the river. Those would seem off the top of my head to be the larger available areas to redevelop or develop something. I mean, I, that's just, that's just my feeling. I mean, it's going to be very difficult to do anything on the PJ Keating property. It's also going to be very difficult to do something where all that extensive small-lot residential stuff is. Most of the holes in that are wetlands. So, I mean, most, most, that's, that seems like it's an interesting area to think about, but, you know, there's a lot of homes, a lot of older homes, a lot of smaller homes that would be on the more affordable side. That seems like something that would be pretty difficult to tackle. And certainly, I think the town would be open to ideas as to, you know, what, what the ideas of development or redevelopment would be there. Particularly, again, the old titleist properties, but also, I mean, is there anything we can really do with the small-lot, highly-developed section just north of, yeah, PJ Keating? You know, most, and again, most of those areas, I mean, we're getting requests for, you know, small extensions of lots, and even what we're seeing now, those small lots, a lot of them are half-wetlands, and anything beyond them are all wetlands. So it just seems like that, that's going to be a real tough area to look at and say, that's a, there's something we really need to change there and displace people's homes and really eliminate some of the more affordable homes in town. I don't, I don't see what, myself off the top of my head, what we can do there, but we should certainly, we'd certainly be willing to listen to anything that Serped has to say as to what kinds of things might, might work there.
Yeah, and, you know, I think we do have, you can see that there's these like yellow ones kind of spread around. These are called, we call them combined priority development areas and protection areas. So oftentimes, they're for kind of more historic village centers or areas with a lot of sensitive ecological or natural things, but they also have some development repotential. So that could be something we can explore, or we could just actually take it out or refine the boundary and say, hey, let's just pick the one, like the empty lots or something.
I guess I'm just trying to be realistic about it.
Oh, definitely.
I mean, you know, I mean, what, what kinds of things can you really do that are, you know, gonna displace a lot of smaller, more affordable, single-family homes in town?
Yeah, we definitely don't necessarily want to say, okay, yeah, we're, we're not necessarily saying we wanna upzone this, and if you are like, no, we're not necessarily interested in changing the fabric of this...
I just don't know what the options are. I mean, to be, to be quite, quite honest with you. And certainly, I think the town could use a little guidance, a little insight, and a few great ideas as to if there really is anything that can be done in that area.
And that's just gonna come out of that workshop that basically...
Yeah, I mean, exactly.
There's a lot of the things that discuss, it's between, you know, the DPW, you know, the overall. I mean, that's what, ultimately with those workshops, it's gonna... Now, I'm assuming this is the work, is it, the workshops take place over a couple of weeks, a couple of sessions, or is it just when it, when we set up a workshop for, you know...
Is it a one-day thing?
Yeah, generally, it's a, um, we, because of kind of the scope and scale of the project, we generally can really only do like one per community, yeah. We, we do this, like, one technical working session and then one draft review in each community. So is there kind of a, I looked briefly in the, like, Acushnet, like, planning website. Is there an ongoing master plan process or...?
A master plan is a little outdated.
Okay.
And right now, we are without a town planner. We're in the process of trying to find a new town planner. And once we have a town planner, that's our, one of our first projects, I guess you could say, would be to update the master plan and, and, you know, whatever help we can get regarding that is also a big thing too.
Yeah, in many ways, this process will kind of be like, kind of a stepping stone for establishing some of that vision, some of that, for those priorities, especially if you're kind of like land use, housing, and economic development, but also the open spaces and like natural resources.
Right, right, yeah. But I, I think this is great. I think, like I said, I know that our Town Administrator is working on a date to get that workshop going. I think it's gonna be in September. And if you could get me some of this information prior, get it to the board so we can...
Yeah, and please let us know when the workshops, like, when that might be happening here.
Yeah, yeah.
We're very flexible.
Yeah, and Steve's kind of part of, you know, representing the Acushnet and Serped. I think, you know, we'll definitely have, you know, more dialogue in the future, especially, you know, considering the workshop.
Great, thank you so much for...
Thank you, thank you for taking the time.
I just have one other quick question while, while you're here. I mean, I'm, as a long-term, a long-time resident, is, is the rail project really close? You know, I mean, listen, I've heard, you know, the rail's gonna happen and then ten years go by.
Yeah.
The rail's not there yet.
Twenty years have gone by.
As a matter of fact, I go down, I mean, I go downtown from time to time, and I go underneath the railroad bridge that's been there, it seems like forever. It's well-painted and it's, it looks nice, but it's just, it's hard to get enthusiasm for, for something that's been in the works that long and has seen so many delays.
Oh, definitely.
Any, any clue at all? I mean, five years?
No, it's like within the next one or two years, like, what, probably in two thousand twenty-four. I think it'll be...
I mean, that would be amazing. So certainly, within the next five years, before I go to a nursing home, we may, we may see an actual train roll in there and roll out of there.
I think they're already like testing, you know, like, it's built out. They're just, they're like testing some of the trains. They, most of the stations are most fully built.
There have been so many stop and goes with that project with funding. You know, it's just, I don't know, like I said, it's, it's, it's difficult to get much enthusiasm going with all, with the long-term nature of it and how many delays it's had in the past.
Definitely, and actually, I mean, our main, the main funding for this project is coming from the MBTA in the state, so they're very involved in this project. So Jean Fox, she's kind of the project lead for South Coast Rail. She definitely would have a lot more information. I just know it's, they're planning on it like within a year, at least, I think, but maybe I'm being optimistic.
No, I mean, it's, it's slowly but surely, you know, advancing, but...
Yeah, I lived in Boston for a while, and they were like doing a Green Line extension. It's been, they finally opened it.
Yeah, the, I mean, one thing relative to that, that we've heard from the Town Administrator and when we had a town planner from him too, about assessments, once it does happen, and what its impact is going to be on, on the town, and what, if anything, the town needs to do to prepare ourselves for something that, I'll say, will happen within the next five years. I'll be optimistic on my end. And that's, I, I think when we get to the workshop section, it would be great if somebody from Serped could kind of fill us in a little bit more about how imminent it is and what the financial impacts will be on the town of Acushnet.
Definitely.
Anybody else?
No. No, that's it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Phil.
Should I put this back in or...?
Uh, you can just drop it.
I mean, I'll probably forget, but when we do get to the workshop section, I mean, one, one area that seems like it's the most prime for some kind of industrial development is the old White Swamp area. I mean, they're putting, they're putting up, they're putting up a, a new building there now, but there's a lot of land back there that if it's, if the water and the sewer are there, it's relatively close to the highway.
Right.
Thank you very much. I'm bringing it in.
Thank you, you too. It's a great spot for light industrial in this town.
I, I would think that if, if the infrastructure can fit in place, that, that's, that's a great, that's a great area to look at.
It is, it is. I mean, you got, if we got sewer and water down Middle Road as far as whites, that would be great. Like you said, the titleist...
The titleist property, just another one that...
I know that there's rumblings about that project, actually something coming of that project. I would love, and I don't know a lot about it, but the two-forty exit off of, between Fairhaven and Acushnet, I know that there was years ago...
It almost, it almost became realized, but...
Well, if it was almost realized back then, then it is possibilities if it can realize now. Whether we hook up the sewer here or we hook up the sewer at Fairhaven, there's gotta be a way to maybe manipulate that area as well.
Something to look at. I, I hate to tell you, but when I was a graduate civil engineer, just out of college, and worked at TIBETs Engineering for a little while, and this would have been back in seventy-six or so, and prior to seventy-six, by five or six... prior to 76, by five or 10 years, there was something that looked at a connector. But I, I think in the, and I may be wrong, but in the, unfortunately, in the intervening 50-plus years, environmental issues have become much more important and much more difficult to overcome. And I think the connector there may be, so there may be so many envi, it's something to look at in terms of, of that scoping meeting or that, that we're going to have. But I, I think that probably is killed that possibility.
I mean, it's, again, it's something that during the workshop, we can talk about, bring up and, and throw around, but I think wherever we have possibilities for anything to help this town commercially with housing, especially, like you said, a lot of people have brought up the point that people have lived here their whole lives. And then when they go to, you know, retire or, or, you know, need, need assisted living or need something, they can't afford and they can't stay in this town because there's nothing here. And I think that's, you know,
Oh, no, no question.
In my, in my mind, it should be, you know, a top priority. And I've spoken to people that have ideas, I've spoken to people that have land that have, you know, have ideas. Zoning might need to be tweaked a little bit, but I definitely think it's something that as a town, we should, we should look at it. Over 50 doesn't put a huge burden on the town for schools and
Oh, absolutely.
It's definitely something I think
And there's a value of the structure that will, should contribute positively to the tax base instead of negatively.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. All right, we are going to move forward. On number three, discussions and other topics, we skipped over A. We are, because we went to the letter B for Serpents, so now we're going to go to A. And what we're going to do is the vice chair is going to take over.
Okay.
And I go from
We kick you out?
No, actually, I'm going from this side of the table.
Okay.
To this side of the table.
Okay. Okay, our chairman has had to recuse himself from this side of the table because this involves some property that he owns and has been working on for, for quite some, some amount of time. I just will note first of all that there is a, there is a letter here from Dan Menard, director of the DPW, that, that work that has been done out there and completed is inspected and approved as per the plan. So that's a big hurdle right there. And with that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Francois.
I'll, I'll give you and everybody else a quick, quick background. I'm here as a resident, as a citizen of Cushing, I'm not here as a member of the planning board. Under typical situation, if we had a town planner, I would recuse myself and the town planner would represent me. But because we don't have a town planner, I'm representing myself. Quick background, most of you know, again, for everybody else out there, approximately two years ago, I completed the project. A small subdivision on Perry Hill Road, and we put it as a three-house subdivision. And we put all three houses under a covenant until the road was complete. A few months into that, the road was 50% complete, Dan Menard had gone out there and inspected the first half of the road and approved the first half of the road as being complete. I had come in and requested for a partial release. The board discussed and the board released two out of the three lots. The board kept one lot, which is lot number two, under the covenant until everything was 100% complete. Since that time, Dan Menard has been out there a couple of times to inspect and just recently have been out there and inspected. The road is 100% complete from Perry Hill Road all the way to the back half with the Hammerhead. And that's why I'm here, to get the final lot released, so I can sell off the final lot and be done with this project. Also, sorry, excuse me, a quick note is the only thing that is left to do is a small replication area, which I have spoken with the stormwater agent, he's been out there, he's inspected. And that's the only thing that's left to do, but I have two years, I think, under the stormwater regs to get that completed.
And in, in any case, that part is really under the purview
Correct.
of Conservation Commission, not planning. We're not going to, as, as a planning board, we're not going to tell the Conservation Commission or their agent, you know, whether or not a replication area has been done correctly or not. Also, as I recall, I mean, this road really stays as a private road.
Correct.
And that it, the, the people that live there are not even going to be able to request that it be accepted unless it's brought up to complete subdivision standards.
Correct.
Okay, that's just making sure I remember that correctly.
Yep, that is correct. So, I mean, in a nutshell, you are here to vote on whether or not to release the last lot and fulfill the covenant.
Okay, that being said, either of the members, anything to further add to that?
Nope. This is just for someone to hold it a couple of months back, so I'll make a motion to release the covenant over at 301 Perry Hill Road.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You can come back now.
I'll take one hat off.
Now, the paperwork part of it, that's
Oh, we'll, we'll discuss that.
Okay, that's the thing that I, I'm no good with paperwork. That's why I need a town planner.
Yeah, we all need a town planner. Next on the agenda, this was a little bit of a again, I'm going to put a little bit of background on this and inform our viewers of, of the latest developments. So letters C and D, which are solar special permit extension requests for Mendel Road and Morse's Lane. Until about a month ago, maybe two months ago, everybody was under the impression that special permits were good for two years. We were not informed, we were, we didn't know, nobody told us, but the state had changed their special permit timeline from two years to three years. That happened, that happened in July, it went into effect July 1st, 2021. Nobody notified anybody, so we didn't know. We were all under the assumption that all special permits were good for two years. It was brought to our attention, to my attention, and then we had town council look into it. And it is true that the state has changed its special permit time from, a lot of time from two years to three years. As far as these two solar projects are concerned, I, we, these two solar projects came in front of the board for an extension because they thought their two years was up. We thought their two years was up, so they came in front of the board requesting an extension. This was actually a meeting that I was not at, I did not attend this meeting. But during this meeting, their special, their request for an extension of this special permit was denied on both lots. And if I'm not mistaken, it was just from a lack of
Activity?
Activity, thank you. Well, the issue now, which I am waiting for town council to give me the answer, because these are the only two that have asked and have been denied. There's another one that has asked over on 540R, I think it is, but we haven't denied or granted, we just pushed them off for further information. So these are the only two that have been, that have come in, requested an extension and have been denied. Now, instead of just saying, hey, you've got an automatic year, I can't do that because their permits were approved prior to the law going into effect. So I'm waiting to hear back from town council
Okay.
on what takes precedence.
Yeah, right.
Does it take precedence because their permit was granted and approved prior to July of 2021?
Mm-hmm.
Or do they fall, automatically fall under the new law once it went into effect in 2021? So I don't have that answer. This was put on, anticipating that I would have that answer. I do not have that answer yet, so I am going to make a motion that we reschedule this special, solar special permit extension to another meeting.
Sure, I mean, it, it, oh, who knows? I have no, I have no institutional knowledge on this one. I also have no practical knowledge of this one because that's the first I've ever heard that the state actually acted on extending special permits.
This was from the little bit of research that I did, this was all come out of COVID. Okay, economic development, trying to recover from COVID. The way I read everything coming through and it was brought in front of State House. And that, that's how it came out and it, and it's worded that it's, they still was looking for some additional language, but it's actually worded that it's up to three years. Okay, so we have, we still have the option. This is the option we got, we got to figure out, especially for these two that were, that were voted prior to July 1st of 2021. But we still have, we will still have the option going forward to I believe in it as part of the questions that are being brought to town council, that we'd be able to put this in our bylaw and we can keep it to two, two years. Maybe not these particular ones, we don't know, but going forward, we need to add it into our bylaws.
Our bylaw, if, if, if our bylaw had two-year date on it, then that would trump the state's change.
Yeah, I understand, but
But we don't have
We didn't because for the
We just went off the state.
The last 40 years, it's been two.
Yeah.
The state, the state underlying legislation has said a special permit is good for two years.
Right, there's some certain language that everybody's been looking for, they haven't quite seen it inside that, that bill. When I spoke to Jamie Kelly, same thing, he says there's certain things that they, you know, the language that he didn't see in there, so it, it's a reasonable question to ask.
We're just, I got some questions still with town council, so
Okay, I would say, sure, let's put them off till the next meeting.
And then we'll see
If they have anything
We see if we have any, you should have answers by then. This, like I said, this just went to town council a couple of days ago.
I mean, I know you weren't here for that meeting, but I mean, one of the big reasons for not, you know, voting for an extension is the other ones, there were three or four others that we did give them the extension. But they came in with a very clear document that showed how they had diligently tried to bring the project to fruition. I mean, they'd gotten their building permit, they had done a pretty fair amount of, of construction on the parcels. You know, these guys, they had no building permit, they'd never made an attempt to to do any construction there, and I don't remember, I don't believe that they even had done anything with conservation. Do you remember?
No, no, they had no
I mean, and it was some interconnection
Interconnect was an issue. The interconnect's another story, but I mean, in terms of the local stuff, you know, I mean, the I, I think one of the things that is probably going to end up with that there's going to be some, some real legal goings on is if they've got their special permit, but Eversource is holding up everybody's interconnection permit until 2027, you know, does that almost toll all the special permits that we granted? You know, all somebody's got to do is say, is come in and say, well, we're trying to go forward, but we're being held up by Eversource. So is that strong enough to say we exercised our special permit? I don't know. I mean, typically, up until this point, without Eversource involved, when I worked for a private developer and we had our own attorneys that were looking at it, if you had the special permit and you could convince the building inspector that you were progressing on the construction in a continuous fashion, then it could toll for five or six years. But whether that applies to an additional permit from Eversource, I don't, I don't, I don't have the answer to that. That, that becomes a legal question at that point.
And it does, and, and I think there's still a lot of stuff coming out of Eversource that, I mean, I'm hearing it, actually, some of this the new transmission, the, you know, expansion of transmission lines is really not going to be complete till 2030 at this point. There's also, I've heard some rumors that basically they've kind of shifted away a little bit from from solar to wind, because they've already met their goal
Massachusetts exceeded their goal, their projected goals for solar.
For solar.
For solar. They've exceeded their amount of solar
That, that whole process is going to be very interesting. I think we spoke, we one of the things that was supposed to come up this month at the, at the next meeting was an update from Eversource on where they're standing with this stuff, so I'm waiting for that.
That'd be good.
That'll be up towards the end, end of August, so hopefully we'll have some answers out of that.
It'd be interesting. I mean, from, from, if I were a private developer trying to develop one of these fields, I mean, a 10-year period for Eversource is nothing. You know, a 10-year, a 10-year process for a private developer, which is essentially what all these solar arrays are, is eternity.
But technology, you know, and if it takes this far, you know, the technology's going, technology's going to change. Everything is going to go forward.
Oh, yeah, I mean, 10, 10 years is huge.
When you start talking about solar array size, we might be down a third of the size that it, that it takes to do a one-megawatt system, you know what I mean? It just
Absolutely, you know, no one knows, no one's got the crystal ball. And as time goes on, more and more people will, I'm, I'm guessing will have them on their roofs, you know, in their yard, so I mean, that, that also will help on, you know, attainment of additional solar energy development. Yeah, I don't know, I have no clue how, what's all going to
Yeah, it's, it's all very new to a lot of us, that's why, excuse me, it takes a little time to get town council to get involved and give us the proper answers, so.
I thought the other four projects had already got their interconnect, so they already know
I think they did, yeah, I think they did.
And that was brought up, so these other two, they said it was going to be 27, but the other guys, they actually got theirs.
And the same with 540 over here, they don't, I don't think they have
So I mean, that, that, in terms of exercising a special permit, all their ducks were in
Right, right.
I mean
Right, right. Same with, I mean, same with like Secarfa, they've been actively working on getting them, they've had to hit roadblocks with the butters and whatnot and access, but they have been in front of us a dozen times, they, it's not like we haven't seen
No, and, or they've quit, they've not done, I mean, that they've not done anything and just come in and ask for an extension. Yeah, that's totally different also. I mean, they would have
Did they have their interconnect permit too?
I forgot, no.
I mixed them all up, there's so many. I'm not 100% sure, but I mean, the rumor has it, they, I would have, I'm assuming they probably do because I think those panels are actually
Yeah.
sitting someplace in the house waiting to be installed.
It could, it could very well be.
Yeah, so I think they might. I just wanted to fill everybody in on that and why it was on the agenda. I was assuming that I would have any answer from council by then, but I still don't, so can I get a motion to continue the two special solar permits to the next meeting?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have no town planner yet, we have no long-range planning and no other businesses come in front of us. The next meeting will be Thursday, August 24th. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good night.